I'm going to introduce myself first for anyone who's not familiar with me. I am Shelley Krida. I am the president of the presentation for the 2019. So we're going to look at, I'm just going to share some sort of one to see. And I'm going to walk you through those various budget iterations that we've had. We are presenting a 3.26% increase tonight, which is just over $166,000 in the budget. So we start the budget process by taking input from three stakeholders. So principal, administration, directors of various departments, such as special education, facilities, IP. And we take all of the wants and needs, put them together, and then start developing the budget. So we take that hybrid approach of looking at level services. So we're replicating what happens the prior year for staffing and services provided to students, as well as looking at new initiatives. We did discuss new initiatives prior to first level presentations to school committee. Administratively, we pulled those items out because they were going to significantly increase the budget. And when looking at our level service number one, we were going to be well over 5% even at level services. So it did feel appropriate administratively to be asking for additional staffing, given what the explicit requirement of the budget was at that time. So that was going to be two new positions on the teacher contract. To support students, staff, and faculty and staff or families within the district. We pulled those out. Looking at level services, again, we replicated all of existing staffing and programs. That includes an increase for wage obligations, non-salary expenditures that account for inflation, and then any adjustments for revolving fund revenue. So we help supplement the budget with other funding sources, such as grants and revolving funds. When those funds cannot continue to carry our expenditures, for example, Deerfield used to have a stronger, I don't want to say stronger, we can think of other ways, used to have students coming into the school for the special education program that would be tuitioned in from another district, because that district was paying us two of them for the student's tuition. We no longer have a student's bill that's paying tuition in that way. At one point, we did. We had used those funds to help pay expenses. Without that revenue, we could no longer continue to pay those expenditures. When that happened, you have to find another place to fund those costs, because they're not necessarily related to that student that was coming in. For example, we were bringing in $50,000 tuition. We were using that $50,000 to help with transportation costs, not related to that cost, but generally to help fund the school. So if we lose that revenue, our revolving fund costs have to get moved on to another funding source if there's something that has to be maintained. So that had a significant impact for Deerfield this year, between varying changes in the early childhood fund, the special education fund, and then seeing a decrease in our school choice revenue coming in. We had to pull $182,000 off of those revolving funds and put those on to the general fund. That's a significant amount for a small school to tackle. On top of wage adjustments for COLA, which based on our contract for IAs to give this year is 2%, plus step increases and any column movement for anyone who was advancing their degree, as well as non-salaried staff. So administrative staff, secretaries, custodians, youth service, central office, all of those wages were built in. That increase was $162,000. And then we had a $20,000 increase for non-salaried facilities related. Those were for existing expenses, basically like the trash line has been over budget for several years, for example. So we're trying to right-size those accounts and fully fund properly so that we can pay for our expenses. So those pieces at level services increased the budget by 7.15% or just shy of $365,000, which is why we pulled those new initiative off, even though that the administration felt they were really important needs. This starting point was significantly higher than we've been in prior years and a very uncomfortable position, not one that we would want to bring to our town necessarily. So we started to do some work to make changes. So the second draft that we discussed, I believe at our February meeting, included some reductions. They were both natural changes that happened, so we had a personnel change to build up the kitchen, and then a change in transportation costs after looking at existing routes for next year, what we were going to need. We knew that there was some, and we were able to reduce transportation down. So those two pieces helped us bring the budget from 7.15 to 5.25% increase. Again, level services, no new initiative, just covering our existing staff. So for anyone who listened to the February meeting or was here in person, there was lengthy discussion about the budget at that meeting and how we continue to bring down the 5.25, because it's still significantly higher than the school has been in many years. And it wasn't a number that we were comfortable moving forward with. So it forced us to look at our options. And the largest conversation at that meeting took place around enrollment and the number of class sections per grade, and reducing staffing in sections based on enrollment. Ultimately, the school committee decided to reduce two grade levels by a section each, so classes that had been at three sections were going to be down to two. And there was discussion of a third grade level also being reduced. We talked about paying, holding off on that change another year, seeing what happens with enrollment, and continuing to fund that section with revolving funds or grants if we can. We'll probably end up doing some extra funding for that for at least one school year. And we, I just want to acknowledge that those were really difficult things for us to talk about last month. If you didn't get a chance to listen, please know that the decision to make these changes was not made lightly. We understand the impact on the culture of the school, the community, the parents, the staff, the kids. But in order to bring this down, reduction of personnel is the only way to do that when you don't have other funding sources available. So we did make that decision to reduce, it'll basically pull off two faculty positions. Existing IAs, we talked about maintaining, no reduction in instructional assistance staff. So anyone who was in a class, you know, that third section builder, get reorganized based on what kind of comes up with for staffing. Any questions about any of that before we move on?
I should say, I'll speak to you in a second. I should have said again, we'll be discussing the budget tonight and getting input from the public, but we will not be both. We'll be voting to leave.
Okay, so if there's no questions, the only thing that I have, you can see the budget increase there. I mentioned at the beginning, it's 3.26% total general fund of $5.2 million. We'll use another $750,000 of grant and some revolving fund money to fully fund just over $6 million for a budget for operations. And then I believe I gave you the existing enrollment data, as well as the historical. So again, we haven't been over 3.5% in several years. I think if we even looked that far than that, I'm sure Tina and Barry's going to test it, it looks like my time, you know, staying around that 3% is a comfortable number for us. We feel like our town will support that and be able to fund without a significant level of hardship. So coming in at 7.15 or even the 5.25 just was very uncomfortable for us, especially in a year where enrollment is down and we could make some decisions based on class sizes and efficiency. The only other thing I want to say before we go to comments is that I want to make it known, and we talked about this at the last meeting as well, that I don't perceive this as a one-year fiscal plan. I see this as a multi-year challenge. If we use SRA funds to pay for that third faculty position that we're talking about reducing based on enrollment, SRA funds run out in September of '25. So we're sort of prolonging a problem with that. We will have to look at enrollment again. There could be additional reductions in sections if it's enrollment-driven and we don't have another funding source. And we will have to continue to look at our revolving funds and make sure that there's no additional problems with expenditures. I don't have anything else to say, but happy to make questions.
Shelley, I just said, did you just say SRA funds run out in September of '25 or '24?
Oh, '24. It's fiscal '25, yes.
Fiscal '25, but September of '24.
Thank you for correcting me.
That's a, yeah, that's an important distinction to make, so.
If you could speak up a little bit, it's just folks who are farther away from the mic are, it's hard to hear.
No one said anything yet. They're just kind of chatting amongst themselves.
Oh, okay. I'm used to hearing it by sitting next to them, so sorry.
Could you put up, you had sent a general, not line by line, but department by department budget plan? Is it possible to put that up for people to look at? I had a couple of questions off of it, so.
Yeah.
It's coming, forgetting.
Oh, okay. Now it said my copy won't come up on my computer or my iPad.
Is there something in particular Ken you want me to go through or?
Sure. Well, let me, I just had written, jotted down a couple of things on the numbers, because the numbers don't provide, there it is, because the numbers don't provide a lot. I mean, I went back and answered some of my initial questions just by looking at the current general fund summary. But I did notice testing and assessment has about a 7, 7.5% increase. I just, it's kind of a, just a question of what, what might be involved in that kind of a number. It's a $5,000 increase on a $70,000 budget.
Are you looking at 2720, that testing and assessment line?
Yes.
That is entirely a wage increase based on COLA and STEP for a
Okay.
teaching position in that line item. So that 2720 accounts for testing, software supplies and materials for regular education and special education, so direct testing of student assessments
Right.
as guidance staff.
Okay. Thank you. That, I thought that might be what it was, but I, without the detail, I couldn't tell.
So the, the thing that inflates the salaries over the 2% is the STEP increase.
Absolutely. I understand that.
Typically, that's about 3% for anyone else who's curious of what that looks like. It's usually about 3% for a STEP. However, if somebody does have column movement, that adds to the increase as well.
Right.
Or they're stepping from 13 to 14, there's a significant increase there because you sit at step 14 for so long. That's why that's about 7% as you said, is the STEP in there as well.
Sure.
What else do you got, Ken?
I should probably know exactly why, but is transportation really going up by 88% next year? I can't remember why it would be doing that.
So we moved some of the transportation expense off of the revolving fund because we no longer have special education transportation revolving money coming in.
Right.
So there is an increase to costs. Our roofs are costing us more, but it's early because we were paying $60,000 from revolving, and we can no longer do that.
Right. I just think for the public, it's important that they know that.
Yeah.
And wanted to make sure. I noticed that heating is, you've left heating flat for next year. Are we under budget this year?
So I left the facilities and any utility-related items as they are. One, I may have increased them in that initial budget that we had, but we brought some towards back down to try to bring the budget number down.
Right.
But we'll look at a multi-year historical data, which for heat is a little bit tricky because we're seeing stuff so significantly. But I'm honestly banking on that we'll have savings from another account line if that does go over budget.
And another one that I didn't see the level of detail on, I got a partial answer when I looked into the general fund this year, but building security has a fairly significant increase as well, about 72%.
What line item are you looking at?
I, unfortunately, I took all my notes off of the document you have there, and I can't, I can't pull it up on my iPad here. I don't know what I did wrong, but it's not coming up for me.
Thank you. So that is the testing and inspections line. So that covers the Siemens contract that we've talked about
Okay.
repeatedly moving to this from the general repairs.
Yeah.
So that affects the true cost of that contract.
Right. Yeah. I just, and my memory is good, but it's, it's getting shorter and shorter, and I couldn't remember what we were moving there, but I knew something got moved.
Great.
So. And those were my primary questions coming out of it.
Great. Thank you.
Do you think you can speak loudly or if someone was closer?
No, that's okay. I can speak up. Jim Camias, I'm on the Deerfield Finance Committee. I seem to be the only one over here tonight. Would you all mind breaking down the paraprofessional, the section 2330, the instructional assistance? Because how many classroom assistants and, forgive me for not knowing, what is a KIA? I assume that's an assistant as well?
Kindergarten.
Okay. How many individuals do we produce representatives?
So we have 28 instructional assistants in the budget. And that is high, not because we added positions, but because we moved IAs off of some revolving funds because we didn't carry them. So early childhood and school choice revenues are expected to be down next year. So in order to not over spend too much on what we're bringing in, we shifted that expense onto general fund. We have not added any new instructional assistants in this budget.
Well, in fact, I wanted to ask as a follow-up, since you're reducing the class sections into grade level, will that be reflected in any, by any reduction in the positions?
We are not reducing our number of IAs. Currently, there are not enough IAs budgeted to have at least one per classroom. Several of our IAs are in one-to-one positions where they're dedicated to specific students based on an IEP. And as a administration and school committee, we felt really strongly, even with the reduction in class sections, that it was important to keep our staff maintained so that the teachers and the students have the support that they need, given a significant change as well.
Yes, I, I don't know if Tina could, I'm sorry.
So with the consolidated class sizes are going up as well, so it wouldn't make, it wouldn't be effective or efficient for us to review our.
Yeah. It might be helpful, Tina, just to talk about instructional assistants and how they're spread throughout the building, so that the, the general public that's not as much aware as some of us might be, has better understanding. I mean, you know, Shelley just touched on the fact that you're trying to have, hopefully, one aide per classroom, but they're all the one-to-ones and everything else is going on in the building.
So our philosophy is a multi-year system of support, and so having an IA in every classroom will help us to meet every student's needs. Right now, we're not set up for that. In kindergarten, preschool, states of our instructional assistants are down in that end of the school. I say that end of the school, but it feels like it's forever to get to. We have, I believe it's like three in our 1-2 hallway, which is five classrooms. We're pretty thin right now. If you were to ask me what my opinion is, and we have a couple IAs here, I'm sure they'll tell you the same thing as some teachers. We have four down our, two down our 3-4 hallway. We have a LEAP program here, which is students that may be out of curriculum or have multiple disabilities and therefore they're staffed at a higher level. And in our 5-6, we have a little bit of a media group in our 5-6 where they feel a lot of energy. And so we have four IAs down there. Like when we consolidate classrooms, we're talking about, just for the public also to know, that we're talking about class sizes right now that are 12, 13, and going to 19. We've got shift in different profiles in the classroom. We're anticipating that we're in some extra support too, to also service them academically and socially emotional.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone with comments, questions? So is that better if I was, oh, I didn't see, sorry. I saw you for a voice.
So should I move to where somebody's in here? My name is Lori Tomlin, and I am an IA here. And I also have a student here in fifth grade and a student in fifth year. So I have been really following a lot of this kind of on different perspectives. And I kind of wanted to review a few things that I think are important for people to know, things that I've learned a lot about in the past couple of weeks since the February meeting and going through the numbers, and finding out about, you know, differences with different new offices in rural communities and formulas, and like, it's pretty complex. But just kind of segue from what we were talking about the instructional assistant, I would love to just start with some perspective about that, since there are no cuts to IAs right now, but there are also not any significant increases in salaries for positions. And there's also teacher cuts on the agenda. And, you know, I feel these really personally and acutely, and so do so many of the people I'm working with, who I hear every single day, but don't kind of feel like they're knowledgeable enough or mature enough or whatever, that they, you know, want to come and express their stories. So I'm going to take liberty of speaking through some of what we deal with and are thinking with this budget. To start out with the teacher cuts, I work with, directly with a couple of newer teachers who feel like they're working sort of on a chopping block. Whether that's true or not, I think there's some like, oh my gosh, am I going to have a job next year? And that's really stressful and really, to all of the teachers, that I like can't even imagine them not being here next year. So that's, that's one thing, and those cuts are happening, as you know. The instructional assistants, you know, the Massachusetts Teacher Association Union has been working really hard on some incentives and increasing pay for IAs as one of them. And that's a whole nother kind of agenda thing to talk about. But I just want to share some of the stories of IAs that I hear every day. I have, you know, called friends, colleagues, whatever, that they, I hear them like, I have $7 in my account until Thursday. My electric bill went off. How do I figure this out? And they're literally on their lunch break on the phone with ever source, trying to like figure out how they're going to make their next payment. They talk about, you know, roommates. They always have to have roommates, and when one roommate leaves, they scramble for another because they can't afford to live alone. I have, I'm in a two-in-law family, so like, I'm okay, and I have my kids. Like, these guys are like, I didn't have kids and places to live. They, they don't have the salary. So they sit there and they talk about, should I go work at a party? Or should I just get like a brag and click type of job that pays a lot more than this? But I'm really loving it. And I'm talking about people who are not only great at their jobs and that are so supportive of students here, and the students adore them, but I mean, some people have master's degrees, some of us have doctoral degrees, like, you know, we are really working hard and potentially in really significant holes. And these people, a lot of them are working two and three jobs. They come in early and they do before school, they go to different school after school, they work it, I don't want to say, because I don't want to, you know, invade anybody's privacy, but they work on the job at night in accordance to what they're doing, just to make ends meet. I have one IA colleague who also has young kids, and she's exhausted. She's working all day and still has, you know, kids at night. Three, three jobs, three jobs. And she's in a two-in-law family, and has kids, and she's like, I'm just so tired. And there's, there's a breaking point. And now they're looking at class sizes increasing, and they're like, I don't want to do this anymore. And that like, you know, really hits with the core of this school. And, you know, we have the incredible support from Tina and our administrators, and there's always talk about self-care and teamwork, and we juggle and we work to make it, make it all work every day. And this has suffered strong in here. And where it shows up mostly is in the students, because we do see their progress. And that is what keeps us going. But there are a lot of people who feel like on the edge of what they, they can live on anymore. So those are just some of like the human stories, and I can go on. Those are just like top of my mind stories. But, you know, then we talked about the fair chairman, at least a lot of us kind of, how do we work towards that, and we're really excited in that past and the February meeting. Like, I wasn't expecting that it's fair chairman at Wakefield. I knew that we were still going to have to advocate for advocacy in those funds. But I was kind of like, okay, well, I didn't think we were going to go backwards. Like, I thought, okay, we're still here, but we're going to move in this good direction. And then I saw like cuts and, and juggling and SRA funds and all that. And saying, you too, for all the juggling. And that's horrible to have to do that every year, have things together. And it feels like we always come back to that vantage, always the ones that have it together with not enough funding. So here's that FFA, and we found out we're not really going to be resistant against that. And you know what? I don't begrudge the people who, the schools and the MCA, the tech patients who are getting the funds, I'm psyched for that. They need it. I want everybody to have the funds. But we still have to be funded too. That doesn't mean that we, it's not, it shouldn't be zero sum. And it's not just the FFA, right? It's FFA, it's all the things. And Massachusetts ties itself on education as we should, and I should know, because I come from like number 49 state. And yet, the state is sending so little really to our town, our regional school, that the town then has to pick up the rest. And so I get why the finance committee and the town is like, oh, crap, because we have a lot of other expenses, and I'm a tax payer too, and I don't want my taxes to go up. And you do that with anybody else. So I get that. And I, I just feel so badly want people to understand that we as a community are in this together. And right now, nobody's helping, because taxes are going up, we have more expenses, we don't have enough this, that. And really, it's all of us who needs to rally to increase funding from the state. And why is that? Because they are really responsible for a higher percentage, and we're not getting enough. And it's not that the money's not there. The money is there in various ways. We have to get more of that money. And so normally, I would be someone who says, no, hey, contact your reps. You got to, you got to bring us to Boston, right? Well, our representatives happen to be awesome and are on board with this. So for anybody who doesn't know, Natalie Blake and Jill Comerford, I'm sure everybody knows, but like a lot of fellows dug in to know who represents us. So I'm here to tell knows, but like a lot of fellows dug in to know who represents us. So I'm here to tell you that these people are so involved, are so in board. I found out just the other night how, when they were new, this team got them all kind of caught up on things. Then they did a full commission study on sustainable rural schools. And now they're moving forward with trying to bring us to the legislature to say, this is what it takes to have sustainable schools in rural communities, and this is what we want. So thank goodness, we have like a community who really is completely willing to all these good things, and these representatives who are actually working for it. Like, that's, that's a lot of miracles right there. But we have a lot of miracles, and we have strong teachers who also work into these things. So these things are good. What we need to do now, as a community really, is figure out ways to support our representatives in the bills that they're implementing or introducing to be brought to committees in the legislature and passed. And that's, they're kind of at that point right now, that they both are writing the bill, and they're, they're coming up. And I think they named it right after the commission, the Act for Sustainable Future Rural Schools. And so we need to get things like that. They're asking for 60 million more dollars in rural funding. Right now, we're at about 5.5, and the new budget from the government is just now allocating 7.5. They're asking for 60. So that is enormous. And whether it's gonna be on, you know, right now, or over a couple of years, I think that's maybe on the table. That's a lot of money. That contains a lot of things. Now, are we gonna be recipients of that? Because we're in this weird place of other schools around us have even less money. And so again, we want them getting the money, but we want them to, right? So we're, it's that formula thing again, which I'm not even gonna try to figure out, but yeah, you. But that formula helps, kind of puts us through the cracks. So what's been six successful in the past, from what I see and hear, is sort of like communities banding together with other districts, and kind of having like a coalition to take the state. And the banding, that we get those bills heard in committees and passed through committees and approved, because that's a whole nother political thing I won't get into. But some of that stuff doesn't even come up for votes, and women either get shot down. Well, why is that? Corporate lobbyists are there, the bigger money and the bigger lobbyists, and they get their stuff done. So we need to say, hey, you know what? You're here to serve our communities with our tax dollars and us, not the corporate interest. And I don't think there's anybody who doesn't agree that that's where a lot of the money goes. So if you do this really, well, go ahead. But so my thoughts, thank you for all the time, but I think this is really important. I don't think that a lot of people in the community, and even people that I work with, kind of know, where does this all come from? And how do I do it? They feel overwhelmed. They're working three jobs. They don't have a lot of time to research this stuff. So my hope is that the town, this is just all I'm gonna end tonight, I hope that the town, finance committee, administrators, whoever, will continue to, or start to write, I'm sure that you do some of that, the math with the new information that we have, to write to employers, to the state, and share these stories. Share the stories of the IAs and the people that I just shared. Share that our constituents, this is what they're living with, and they're worried. And this is what our representatives are doing. And we want and we demand the support for that. And then as a community, we all have to kind of rally ourselves to also be there and be the wheel. We have to let them know that we get this, and we're not okay with it. And we are not gonna just keep accepting like the answer for cuts. You know what the increase in home is? Like, that increases funding, and then that's in the Florida law, the whole thing. So cuts, you know, give the answer, like, we have nothing left. And I've been from a place that stopped to that point too, and it's, I'm like, yeah. And there are schools in Massachusetts that are there too, and I won't spend the other law funding, but we don't even want to get there. We're already tipping them. And my hope is that the town will really rally with whatever powers you have to the legislature. And then as a community, and colleagues, and parents, and taxpayers rally and say, this is what we want. You have to show up. And it's hard to get taxpayers to kind of pay attention, because they sit on the pitch, they go like, oh, I just want to do it. And it is, because that's where so much of the money is going. You think, well, then we don't have money for life. And all the other things, right? Like, this is a community issue. So my hope tonight is that people will just kind of realize that, and what is happening, the good things that are happening, but that we need to get behind those good things and make a rocket. Because if we don't, we're just gonna have to pack it all together again, over and over and over again, if we cut this, cut that, cut this, cut that, and we're left with women that make people out of the country. And I just cannot wait for that to happen again in my second community. So thank you for the time, and thank you all for all the hard work, and the advocacy, and the numbers, and the juggling, and passing it all together. And mostly, thank you too. Our administrator and my colleagues, we just, every day, every day, we're just like, okay, we're gonna do this. And we do. And you know, we just, we just know they are so loved, and that is how they best learn. So support that. Everybody in our community wants that. I know that. So this is for that. And that's the best. Thank you so much.
Skip Olstead, I serve on the Deerfield Capital Improvement Committee. I have several questions here. Enrollment data, for 2019, you're showing 323 resident students, with 2022, 278. Give or take 15%. Is that, what's that attributable? What was that attributable to?
So some of it is more to smaller class sizes and prepaid community enrollment rates. Yeah, and all like down in pre-teen kindergarten. We went from three preschools to two preschool classrooms, and this year from three kindergarten to two kindergarten classrooms.
Yeah. And that's what, I was looking through, that's about total budget. You're showing 5,200-plus thousand dollars. And total expenses are 6 million. So the budget is a pretty much, would that be correct?
Oh, yes. Total operating, 6 million. We supplement it over some government spending.
Let's see. Capital costs. What, what have we got for, what are you looking for for capital cost for next year? I did get this, and I don't see it in there.
There's something on there.
And you can do that, you can do that later. You can take that.
You should see some ones on that list there. Are you talking about the current year we're in, or next year?
24.
24.
There may be capital requests that we have on the table, is working with the select board on, you can find it, but, you have a, it's kind of a nine-point project, it's kind of a, you see, out there, so you request it, $8,000, to get some. That is the one capital request. We also have a, we put a hold on that, knowing the financial, which is, it's similar to what we, I'm coming to you both, basically, and help it there. So we kind of pulled back on that, and he knows the one on this, that he doesn't find you. So right now, the project I run, we have to kind of hold on it, because we, and we believe, in this school, we're very special, we're trying to over grant to offset some of that cost. And so that's kind of working its way out there. So we're kind of, we're on hold right now about moving forward on that, in some sense. But the select board knows we're trying to get some insurance, because they think, who's in cover, kind of, some of that works and that kind of stuff, and just, students need career chairs, or you can, other assistants, with, kind of, yeah.
So it's $80,000 figures, that's the number one priority.
Yeah. And the only thing that we're asking.
I'll bet we're hopefully gonna grant for our, something 60,000, but under the MDP program.
The last one, this is starting showing up. I've mentioned it a few areas before, but several years ago, I was, you know, listening to the radio or watching TV, and they were talking about some of the schools in either Alabama or Arkansas or something like that. And they mentioned the state's universal preschool program. Here we are, school system that spends roughly $10,000 per kid, Arkansas, versus what we spend a year, and we don't have a preschool program. And, what? I'm not looking for an answer, but I would really like to see school committees and the administration take a look at it. And if this comes next year, the finance committee can say, look, here's what our program's cost. We could add universal preschool for these numbers or that. We had decided, the school committee had conversations with various people, and this money, you know, and, we did Massachusetts, and we're starting to see a way of having our students, and then that town, some of those, people, it's a really interesting as well. So, and I would, probably, traditionally, if, if I were looking for a town to live in, and I've got a choice between a town that has a preschool program and one that does, that takes obviously, then I would look to move to the town that has a preschool program. I think aside from saying, that is, is cost, but obviously, I think there are benefits. Despite the fact that happens, because we can use a preschool program, it's hard to choose, it's pretty out of the cap.
I see a hand raised. Kevin Kittelstedt?
Yep, thank you, Kevin Kittelstedt. I was just curious, in the projections for student enrollment, if there was any anticipation of increased, families taking their kids out of DES because of the increased, uh, class sizes?
Everyone's looking at me. I haven't heard anything. But our class sizes are going up to 19, which is not an unheard of class size. We're really shifting from class sizes that go to 13 to 19. We already have class sizes that are at that level now, so we're not looking to have something that's unheard of. Does that answer your question, Kevin?
Well, I'm just, I was just curious if it was in the, in the projections. Because, I mean, it's a reality, class sizes are going up, and that might, going to 19, even though it's not unheard of, families still have the choice to go out. So that'll cost more.
I, I would say that families will have the opportunity to go out. The question is, how many schools they'll find in the area that have class sizes, even at the size we're going up to? Not to say that there aren't schools, but for the most part, we have typically had student-to-teacher ratios that are much lower than area schools generally run. And we've been very fortunate to be able to do that. And I think that the increases that we're looking at, the, the class sizes we're looking at changing are in grades where we have enrollments that we just can't afford to have three, three sections. We'll be down around 10 or 11 students. And if you have two or three kids out, all of a sudden, you're only teaching, out sick, you're only teaching seven or eight kids a day, or seven or eight kids, and it's difficult. I, I can't speak as a teacher, because I'm not one, but in my past role as a, an administrator in another school, when we got down to smaller class sizes, there, you know, there are other issues. So it's, it's a balancing act, but I, I don't think we've put those kind of, you know, any projections into the possible numbers that would leave. So.
It might be good for me to also clarify that. In kindergarten, incoming kindergarten, we're looking at having a class size of 16. We are not looking to fill the classes, particularly the lower grades, age 19, with collapsing some of the classrooms for these budgets in the upper grades, in fifth grade in particular, the beginning of fifth grade, going to, they're gonna be going to 19 in the upper grades. Our philosophy is to have smaller class sizes in the earlier grades, so we can have more targeted intervention when it's needed. There is a class size of kindergarten this year that was, it was not anticipated that we would have 19 in that class, because things have been unfolded that way. That class, we are looking at breaking into three sections in first grade, and second grade may have two sections. So our, our goal is to keep all the class sizes smaller in the lower grades. So I don't want, I guess I don't want it to, the perception to be out there that we're looking to fill class sizes with 20 and 20 and above. 18 is a good number for us. So when we're consolidating, especially in the upper grades, we are not, we are not looking to fill kindergarten with 20. I don't know if that provides any more clarification, Kevin?
No, that's great. I mean, I, one of the things that I think was attractive about Deerfield when we were looking at places to live was, you know, small class sizes, and I just don't want it to, you know, become a precedent that, that, you know, that's the norm. Because otherwise, people just aren't gonna move here.
Good point. So thanks for the opportunity to clarify, because that's not what we're, I don't think that's what any of the committees, that's not.
Got it. Can I, can I just add, just for the people that are home, listening, that if it's really hard to hear, and Ken, you're clicking your pencil, your pen.
Oh, sorry. My bad. I should mute.
All right, thank you, Kevin.
I did have one other, where, this is, again, just purely informational. It's 2440032222, Other Support Services for Other Instructional Services. Could you unpack that? What is that?
So that, the 2440 Other Instructional Services covers educational components that are not directly related to classroom support. So summer programming, field trips, outside consultants that we bring in for special education. Some administrative costs are in there as well for curriculum directors, or if teachers travel and get reimbursed, that kind of thing. It's primarily, the bulk of that account is for summer school. Of the 81, 65 of it is for summer program.
So that Other Support Services is basically summer?
Most of it is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And just so you know, if you're like, what is the logic behind these different sections? And why is it, seems a little bit more confusing at times, the state requires us to set up the books that way, or something. Just so you know, like, why don't you put all your staff in one thing? Why don't you, you know, they require us to?
They set the function code, so those four digits you're seeing, and then the category description name is set by them. They don't make sense.
I have, I'm sorry. This is more, again, more informational, and there was a little bit to what I think Kevin was saying, even Skip. Do we know why the enrollment, special ed choice in enrollments have come down to the point where we don't have anymore? I mean, one of the reasons why we moved to Deerfield in the first place is because we knew it was a great school, especially for special ed. And so, I mean, it doesn't solve any problems. I'm just curious to know if anyone has any ideas about that.
To clarify, you're asking for special ed tuition then?
Yeah.
Okay. So, why? We have more needs in our program, so it goes by what the openings are in the program. And right now, we don't have openings in the program.
Okay.
Because we do such a darn good job.
If I could follow up on that, Tina. If, if I could follow up on that, Tina, um, the Deerfield Elementary School was one of the first schools in the area to start looking at special needs students and ways that we could support them and not have to send them to programs outside the school. So as Tina was just talking about, we have programs in the school. There are programs throughout Union 38 that have grown. I think initially started, many of them started in the Deerfield School, but have moved to the other schools to provide the services. And it enables us to keep students in our own schools and not have to send them out and tuition them elsewhere. So, um, just thought I would add that. We still have a very strong special education program in the schools.
You keep kicking from the, let's stay this. You have to kick me hard and quick. We not got offers. We just can't. So it's not that we're not an attractive school or that the schools are not looking, or other schools are not even looking for us to take. We just, we don't have open.
And so I'm guessing that the reason we don't have openings is because we don't have money, because we don't have the money and the staffing and.
Actually, if you expanded, if. I'm just curious.
No, you're certain. We have residents with higher needs.
We have residents with higher needs. As a matter of fact, for the, for the first time this year, we have two teachers in that program. Yeah.
But it makes it, you know, those, those programs are expensive. And so it is a big hit on the budget. So while we have one or two students, or just one student, you're talking about almost a percentage point in this budget. You know, the, the cost of that tuition coming in.
Right, and I guess my follow-up question about funding for special ed. I assume that there's, does the school get extra funding from the state for students who have special needs for that extra funding?
Yeah, um, so we, any, any money, something's called circuit breaker. And so basically, when we, when the expenses go beyond, I think the circuit breaker number is right around $45,000 right now. So when our expenses go over $45,000, then that kicks in. And so we pay up to $45,000. Majority of the time, you're going to see that is when we, um, we place students out. There are students, we do have students that are placed out that, you know, we still can't meet their, their needs here. And so we have to get up to 45, and then they will pay us the following year. So it's kind of a delayed, it's a delayed thing. And it's delayed coming off your books when a student, you know, goes on to the next, next grade level. Or ages out of Deerfield.
There's a portion of the Chapter 70 formula as well that accounts for special education students, which increases slightly what you receive for funding based on your special education needs.
And then any school choice students that are coming in, we get, we get the, the direct cost of whatever special ed services they receive in the building. So if they have a school choice students receiving listening speech services, there's a grid that we report that to the state, and then we get, um, we get payment for that.
I'd just like to make a, a public, um, comment. Uh, two, two children in the early education program with special needs, and I just want to, um, thank the committee in the school. And, you know, when, when my wife said they're, you know, they might be removing provisions, it's, it's a shock. And I understand that hearing you all today just reaffirms the pride that I carry as a parent of a DES, uh, two DES children. In, in the thoroughness of this conversation, it's clear to me that it's being taken at a really serious level. The, the thing that I think about, I don't know if it's possible, if it exists now, modeling the anticipated volume of students coming into programs with anticipated years, and then creating some transparency internally for staff so that, that those anxieties that were mentioned beforehand, those could be addressed in ways that, that are very clear. And if, if the, um, threshold is 19 students per classroom, and the models are trending towards a point where there may need to be cuts, it, it's better to get out in front of those because A, the rural mill is pretty small around these parts. So I think clarifying that point where, uh, that this is, you know, this is not to do it with all of the classes. This is part of just necessary expenditures. But being able to predict that and then get in front of the communication, I think would be really helpful. The only other suggestion that I have, and this is a little bit long-term, but looking at grant opportunities for part-time educators, perhaps some innovative innovation funds that could be put in place. So it's not full-time classroom teachers, but they're supplemental educators. I know, I think about some are at school in Springfield. They have some really strong, um, K through five programs, and I know that they bring in some grant, grant-funded educators that do a lot of great work. So if we're looking at cuts, but we still want to continue to get support, that might be an opportunity. I don't know if it's already being done, but I.
All right, if there's anyone remotely who we've missed, raised hands, feel free to jump in now if anyone else wants to speak. I'm not seeing anyone. I don't see any hands here in the room. Uh, any further discussion?
You actually have it in your.
Yes, I know we have more further discussion. But before we move on.
Carrie, can you give us the date of, um, when you're going to vote? And then I, I have two different dates right now for one town meetings. Is that determined yet? Like, the, um, okay. So I have one that said it's in 24.
April 24th, and one that says in May to determine. April 24th.
It's April 24th.
May. And our next meeting to vote is on the 23rd. For two weeks.
On March.
Two weeks from now.
If there's no further comments, I would, um, close the public comment portion of the meeting. And we'll move on to our regular school committee business. Thank you for everyone who came. I have a fantasy of everything. We don't have to say for everything. Our first order of business is to review and approve the minutes from February 9th.
Could I, could I suggest two edits or two possible changes?
Yes.
One would be in the, um, the, um, those attending note. I should probably be noted as attending virtually.
Okay.
And the second would be that I think the motion on school choice is, is, is worded a little awkwardly. I, I'd like to see if we could say, say a motion to participate in school choice for the fiscal 2024 year as recommended by administration with available slots determined when final enrollments and staffing levels are reached.
Ken, would you just email me the words? We're going to, um.
Yeah, I, yes, I can, I can email that or email it to Jen.
That only comment was that it was hard to figure out exactly. So I apologize, Ken, for not getting it quite right.
It's not, no, it's not, that's not a problem. You, the wording you put in was good, but I think this, that's a more accurate reflection of what we were trying to get to is, we need to see what enrollment and staffing is before we can determine open slots.
Gotcha. Great.
Do we need to remove again if there were changes?
What, you do it with the change, you do it with the changes? So.
Except the minutes of February 9th, 2023, with the changes that Ken recommended.
Okay. All right, so we'll, um, vote to accept the minutes with the two changes that Ken suggested. Uh, and we'll do a roll call vote because some of us are promoted. So, Mary?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Carrie, yes. Ken? You didn't hear any, Ken?
You're muted.
Or shake your head?
Sorry, I'm muted. I was clicking my pen again.
Do you vote to approve the minutes?
What's that?
We're voting to approve the minutes.
Yes, and I said yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, financial statement and warrants?
Uh, there were 11 warrants signed electronically since the last meeting, totaling $115,928.34. I did send you out the expense reports. There's no significant changes. Uh, I am working with payroll on some adjustments for the teacher line and the IA line. We've, we've moved around some funding sources in the current year. So I'm waiting for some of those to iron out. So the reason I'm telling you that is because it currently shows that the IA line is over by $70,000. It's not over by $70,000. We're sort of shifting where some staff are being gave from currently. So that'll rectify itself as we continue to go through this school year. Otherwise, I don't have anything to comment on its new significant changes.
Thank you. You just answered the two questions I'd written down, so. The only other one I had was, I noticed under school choice, um, the out-of-district tuitions are over. I may have missed something in prior meetings, but we're, what, over by about $40,000 in out-of-district tuitions?
Yeah, I think that's a funding source, just the purchase order got done wrong, Ken. I have Karen on cleaning that up. It was sort of one of those ones she brought to me and was like, I gotta get this bill in. And I said, book it to that line for now.
Okay.
And clean and, and move it. So, um, I'll, I'll connect with her to clean it up before next month if I can, or have a better answer for you if it actually is over, Jizz.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further questions, discussion? Thank you, Shelly.
Sure.
And thank you for the budget management charmer.
Yes.
All right, let's stop this principal's report.
I don't have a formal report, but instead, ah, guest speaker. Now, for something completely different. We'll lighten it up a little bit.
So just a brief introduction, I'm Gillian Andrews. Some of you know me, you've met me before. I've been here before speaking a little bit about something that we have as a school-wide initiative. And, um, so this is a research-based, high-impact strategy that we're, we're using this year in our school. And we've been doing some professional development around it. And many teachers are, are including this in our day-to-day instructional practices. So we're just going to spend a minute, I think the last time you met, you heard Kristen talk about what success criteria looks like. And it's always fun to see students and what it looks like, what it looks like on the ground. So another part of creating success criteria for students is not to do it for students, but rather to do it with them. So this is just another little window into what happens in Deerfield in, in some places, and something that we're moving towards. So as you are about to watch this video, Tina, can you go back one slide? Or is that, oh, no, that's.
I thought you were going to say something else, clearly.
Maybe, no, that maybe, I thought there was a slide before this. Or no? No?
That's it, there's two, there's, oh.
Sorry. So just as a reminder, while Tina's getting messed up. So success criteria, just as a little reminder for people who are not educators, success criteria is something that we all do in our lives. So if we're thinking about how are we going to lose weight? Or how are we going to have a healthy meal? We want to set success criteria out for ourselves. So, um, if we don't know what our goal is, if we don't know what the target is, then you can't reach the target. And so we have learning intentions, like this is what we're going to learn today. And then we have that success criteria. And oftentimes, what we see in programs and what we do as teachers is we tell children, this is what success looks like. So, thank you. So when we, when we do that, it's a powerful instructional method where our students are really clear about what they're learning. But what can lift the level of that for students is to co-construct that criteria with students. And so what that does is allows us to do the following. It allows us to experience a truly student-centered approach to success criteria. It helps us see the purpose and importance in learning and increasing their sense of confidence so that they can meet those expectations, rather than it just being handed to them. And it develops their capacity to independently construct success criteria to meet their goals in new contexts, both in and out of school. So oftentimes, when we're talking about this with students, we talk about like, if you're playing a musical instrument, or you do a sport, or you are being asked to clean up the chores, or you're cleaning up your house, or do the shovel the driveways, the area so often recommends on its. Um, these, these are just different ways. So you can do this at home, try this at home. So what you'll see, you can go to the next slide, Tina. So as you watch this, I'm going to ask you just to engage in this a little bit and take a mental note of how students are able to do the following. How they can discuss the criteria that they're creating, how they're able to answer the teacher's questions when pushed to defend their criteria, how they're working together, how they're engaged and motivated, and what else? So what you'll see here are some sixth graders who are, um, working on some reading, writing about reading. And one of the problems with reading in terms of assessing it and teaching it is that it's invisible. We can't see, we, you know, with writing and with math and with social studies and science, you can see it, it's very visible. There's, there's a product, but with reading, they're doing it quietly. So teachers try to make that, that learning visible. And so what you'll see here are some students.
You, you are, um, it was linked to a file folder instead of the files. So I'm just gonna, oh, okay. Then I'm just gonna pull it up.
So you'll see this in, um, one of our sixth grade classrooms, and they were broken up into groups. And just for some context, they were given some, um, samples of what strong student writing about their reading looks like. And they had, had many of them. They had a whole pile of it, and they had to look at that, uh, look at those samples and then decide what does success look like?
Gillian was that the one, because it was on.
That is it?
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No, that's.
So, so tell me a little bit about what you guys have been doing. You've been looking at some samples of some, some work, some sixth grade writing about their reading, right? And who wants to begin? Who wants to tell me about some of the success criteria that you've already found?
So we have, so first we have the ones you came up with. We're be creative, use graphics and color, and then the bigger red ledger. Then we came up with three more. We have, we can unpack our work and say more about the main topic. I don't know how to read. We can give background info and tell the person how our problem happened, in the first place.
Wait, when you say our problem, what do you mean by that?
You're kind of like your claim more. And how, like, why.
So are you thinking that your, your, um, entries should have a claim to it? Or like a topic?
They should, like, you should always, it's good to have a claim and the reader knows what you're talking about.
Okay, great.
The background information will support that.
Beautiful.
And the last one we have is, we can make people get hooked and interested in the book you're studying.
Great. And that sort of happened just now, right? Seegre, can you say a little bit about the entry that you were just looking at?
There's, um, the 57 buses. It seems really good because there's like stereotypes, bad influences. It seems like drama-filled almost.
And also, it seems that they could write a lot easily and come up with so much stuff to work with by just doing two characters.
There you go. So that's, that's a little bit, a little window into, into why we're all here. Thank you.
We also. Or Gillian has.
I got more.
Next up, we have public comment. More public comment, if there's anyone here who has.
More?
More to say. Or remotely, who wants to contribute? Or remotely, who wants to contribute. All right, here are none. Move on to unfinished business. First up is a capital update, which we got a preview of.
Yeah, basically, as I was talking about earlier, we're having discussions about the MVP grant. Actually, I had a meeting this morning looking at the front entrance. And so we're putting that together and seeing what... Not much until...
Thank you. And another conversation regarding the budget. That was smartest thing. Anyone more thoughts on the budget?
Just to express my thanks, or, you know, the thanks of the committee to the administrative team and the DES for putting together a very thoughtful budget and going through, you know, a time-honored process of developing a budget that we can bring to town meeting and hopefully get the town behind. So thank you to you all.
Yeah, good point, Ken. Thank you, especially to people. Shelley, thank you for all the work we put together, Shontari, Samra, and everyone who joined us and is here to listen and to share. Thank you.
So we'll be voting it in two weeks. Is there any more budget work that happens between now and then? Are there discussions that people would like to see?
That's what, so, you know, really, you've heard feedback. And if the feedback was, you know, you gotta lower it, or you gotta raise it, and that kind of stuff, that's what this part of this meeting is for, you know what I mean? And, because then you gotta give us direction. If we're gonna go back and do any tinkering with it prior to your next time we meet, we're gonna be voting. So you can, of course, tinker with the budget prior to voting with it, but you really shouldn't raise the budget after your public hearing. Other public hearing, if you choose to raise your budget.
Have the two finance committee representatives left? Are they still there?
Only one was there.
Only one. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Skip's on the, just on the capital plan. My apologies. I'm so used to Skip being on finance committee, so. I just, if we had any thoughts from the loan representative or not, I just...
Unfortunately, every town department has good, solid reasons for raising their budget. Four, three, four, and five percent, when we were trying to keep it to two and a half, you know?
Well, inflation certainly hasn't helped at all this year, so. I don't envy you. Okay.
I have a couple more questions. So the variables that our legislators were talking about, I did ask if any portion, 60 million would be tweaked, but any portion of that that happens, if that's available for the 24-year, fifth year, 24? And I was told, yes. So how does that work as far as, like, timing, we vote on a budget, but then if there's more money?
Do you refer into rural aid? Or is it a different...?
It's, I guess, it would be around that way. It's with the, it's the, I don't know how they're, I don't know if it's considered something different or if it's in with rural aid. Yes, it is, because right now it's at five, right? And it's going up to 7.5, so it's that. So does that come into our district then, or we have to wait on it?
So we currently are receiving some rural aid in Deerfield. We're using it for a variety of reasons. More recently, we used it to pay for the parking lot repairs that we had done in the lube in the back of the building. So some of those funds still remain. Where are we, around 30, 40, 50?
So right now, our 38,525 is 23. 22 is 20,000. So, you know, it just, where you're talking about the big differences. If you travel north, you know, O'Hawk got 260,000. Hampshire got 134,000. Ionia got 175,000. Of course, they're adding them all together, but they're five...
But if they get a new influx of money, which is...
Right. We don't know. We can't project. Because there's some years, some of our schools, I'm using the five schools of our district, some years, some of our schools got no funding, and it's probably because they got money, because they changed the indicators to try to get more money to more schools. So I don't know if they're gonna, how they're going to affect the indicators to make more schools eligible if they give more money, and therefore, there'll be less money to go to more schools. Probably, it'll be an increase, but not percentageally toward the amount they increased that here. And so when I met with, and I think I said this, you know, you're a frontier meeting tonight, but when I met with Joe Comerford last Friday, I said, "I would like you to pass, to do something where we know you can't reduce the amount of rural aid from one year to the next by a certain percentage, so that we can say, if you can't reduce it by more than 50%, let's just use that number, so that we can use that directly to go into the budget." I mean, that would be helpful to us. Right now, we don't use that in the budget, because we don't know how much is gonna be funded and that kind of thing. And so we could risk it, and some districts are risking it. They're gonna say, "You know what? We're gonna go off the governors. We don't think it's gonna go less than that. We're gonna throw that into our budget." We haven't done that. And then also, when Shelley talks about, like, "I didn't raise utilities, we'll find money," she kind of knows that these kind of things are coming in to offset that we didn't raise utilities. You know, that kind of thing. So until it gets more stabilized, that's...
Then we wouldn't do it until the next...
Yeah, and we have experienced that with regional transportation, you know? And so, you know, Deerfield doesn't fall back for regional transportation. But Frontier does, and that number of percentage goes up and down each year of how much they're reimbursing us on that. And if you budget wrong, or there's, you know, there probably will be 9C cuts this year, but they can cut that money in the school year, and then year, whatever. So we are usually are conservative around that number. So, and this is new funding, so we're learning more, you know?
But we won't know until after this budget's already passed. So we can't count on that Friday to help supplement. I expect that we'll get more than we did, but, like I said with the Chapter 70 formula at the Frontier meeting, the rural aid formula is complicated as well. Deerfield's not in the highest tier to receive funds. So even if we get more, there's a lot of other schools above us. And not knowing what that increase is, are they gonna give us another 10,000? Because that's been the pattern. It helps, and we will certainly find ways to spend it. But it's not, this is part of the reason we haven't used SIR funds either to fund salaries and wages, is because you can't rely on something that's not consistently funded. And that could potentially go away at any time. It's much like we're in the position with our revolving funds now, that we're having to figure out how to pay for those things.
All right, so as a school committee, do we want to see any changes being made? Or are we ready to move forward with this? Any thoughts?
I'm ready to just move forward, because this is what we have.
I would just like to say that, for the record, this is, of course, not an easy decision to make. No one wants to be here, trying to make these decisions. And it's complicated. It's not just the budget we're looking at. We're looking at enrollment numbers and what makes sense for the school. And then how does school choice play into that? Are we making decisions now that will affect our capabilities for taking school choice students in the future? How will that affect things? As long as we're on board. Not a fun decision to make.
Yeah, I would just sort of chime in on the same level to say that, you know, it feels like, as Shelley mentioned earlier, we spent a lot of time on, you know, really trying to ask as many questions as we can to figure out ways to make this, you know, to make it an easier thing so that we don't have to cut positions. But it does feel like we're in, you know, kind of caught in this, you know, with forces beyond our, you know, beyond our abilities to solve it, you know, ourselves, like... So we're doing everything we can, I think, to make sure that we're staying, we're doing what we, the best we can.
I can say that I'm comfortable with moving forward with what we have. To get it to the finance committee and see if we get feedback from them, then we can react. But I think this is a number that, you know, we should at least pass along to the finance committee to let them know that in two weeks' time, there's a strong likelihood we'll be passing that number. So.
I suppose I just want to add one other thing, which is that I'm glad for the feedback that I've heard today. And something that I know is, I don't know how much it would actually affect what we have to do right now, but, you know, communicating, I'm glad Darius has been able to be talking with the senator. And I also plan to, you know, try to get some feedback to the state to make sure, I know, I think maybe others too, but, you know, that we're gonna try to make our, you know, our stories be heard. Because it isn't, you know, it's not fair to have to cut our budgets when there's more money out there. So just wanted to put that in there.
All right, so it sounds like we're ready to move forward. And we'll vote on the 23rd of the current post-budget. Up in new business, we have a first read of the 2324 school calendar.
So just a little, your folks are, you have another school committee meeting between now and next year. But the idea is to, you're, I'm setting this out to everybody, that the calendar for next year, we do at our joint meeting. And so I want to get everybody at the meeting in advance to be able to review it, so we can vote it at the joint meeting when everybody's there. Because you can imagine the problem would be if one town doesn't like the calendar, another town does. So if we're all there, then we can kind of hammer up that. But at least everybody gets to see it well in advance. So it says first reading, but we're not, it's not gonna be on the agenda for the next meeting. It'd be helpful for the joint meeting. So, and again, we'll discuss it at the joint meeting, but unless you see any glaring concerns or errors, you know? So again, it's more on that.
Thank you. And we also have a first read of the school committee guide. And I want to say thank you to everyone who put work into putting this together. Having a guide will be a great resource for new committee members and existing committee members, having all that information come up late and giving us a set place to start.
And again, that is first reading. Jessica Corwin has, she kind of half-volunteered to help me edit it, and I jumped on board, and now she's full volunteer. So it was one of those, like, "Oh, you're now, you have now a mandate." You know, you just click one quick, you're an editor. So it was like, "You're half-editing, right, so you're an editor." But it is really your document. And so, like, I kind of got it to a point where I can, I feel like I can hand it off. But the idea is that it probably, it's gonna be hard to have all things school committee in it, because it's gonna be, like, how many times are you really gonna pick it up after you know it? But it is really, as you said, really strong for you understand, you know, all the different definitions, all the different things you're responsible for, and how things run. And we probably need to leave that updated every few more things. And the digital version has all the links that we go, you know, way through this.
I was just, I was just gonna comment, yeah, thank you for getting this going, because this is exactly the kind of thing I was hoping we could have come together. And I do have thoughts, and maybe, I'm not trying to volunteer myself to help, but I probably will be helping with, to just, because I was just thinking things like having links or, you know, of things that are mentioned. You have, there, yeah, I was starting to go through it. And actually, my question was, how much of the nitty-gritty would be going through here? Or is there still time to be able to, you know, you know, track, give feedback on more of the specifics? But I'm glad it's, it's, this is exactly the kind of thing I was hoping to see put together, so thank you.
So jumping out there, Erica, I did see a few little changes that could be made. So regarding editing, do you want us to forward, come to you? It was small things, like in places where it's important, it was frontier committee.
And she's already jumped in.
Yeah, I checked it today.
She's already jumped in.
Okay, but I checked it earlier than I expected. She got halfway through, and I think...
So, Bill, if you send it to me, I'll be forwarding to her.
Okay.
And we'll just go through it.
Okay, all right. Can you comment?
You can probably comment right on it.
I think I have no help without editing. Okay. Yeah, there's something about meetings, with the calendar meetings.
I think I was looking at the PDF that was in the packet, and that's different from the document that you linked to. So there's probably the changes you were talking about in the doc, the Google Doc that you linked to, or something like that, right?
Yeah, Erica, I think they were in the email that was a couple weeks ago now.
Yeah, yeah, I was just realizing that there's two copies, that I was looking at a static copy of it, and that's what you're probably referencing, that there are differences that are, things that have been caught up that I haven't seen, because I was looking at the...
Gotcha. I'll often go in through my personal email account, which my frontier one forwards to. That's where I do the vast majority of my correspondence. But then when I go to work on all the shared docs, I have to sign out and sign in under the frontier so that I can do that. But that was my plan.
In that one, I'm gonna ask that we vote, that we, it's more, it's not a policy, it's an agreement that we'll be using that. We can get forward, so that everybody's kind of on the same...
Is that, my document is final, is that something that will be shared publicly? I'm thinking it could be helpful for people considering writing for school committee.
I can put it on the school committee website. I can put it on the school committee website, sure. Right now, if you go to people, a lot of this stuff, MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, they just redid their website. If you haven't been on it in the last month, they redid it like last week, or launched it last week. And they have a lot of whatever roles and responsibilities. And we're starting to link some of that, Jessica was starting to link some of the stuff in there to that as well. So if anybody has their interest, go to that site. There's a lot of information there. And there are some differences between committees and some rules that are set by them that we don't follow, because they're just very, like, general guidance. And then, you know, what do we actually do sometimes is a little different.
I will say, our committee has also just scratched the surface on, and Erica sort of brought this up a couple of meetings ago, about our communication to the public as a committee, not necessarily administrations, but like, us improving how we get messages out, and like, some of the things that we're talking about, and eliciting some more input, like, marketing ourselves a little bit more about showing the community of all the things we do. Because lots of people aren't gonna, like, sign in every month and watch a two-hour meeting. Understandably, people are very busy. So I think that that's something that we're working on. It's actually outlined in this manual, like, there's like a paragraph around, you know, communication with the community. But just to try to raise awareness about these really important decisions that we're making. And the school budget is 70% of our overall budget as a town. So it's just, these are really important decisions, and engaging the public the best that we can, I think, is an area that we want to work on as well.
I think you're providing a really good segue into the next topic on the agenda, which is goal-setting for the committee. The part of the agenda where we're talking about this.
Well, I would just say that, you know, certainly, actually, the handbook was a great segue of itself, because getting our, you know, having all of us look at what Darius has put forward, what Jess is doing, is definitely one of the things I was hoping we could do. And absolutely, like, going through, and, I mean, I thought it was interesting too, earlier, when the comment about, you know, having a pre, you know, the preschool question that had been brought up by the finance committee member, and just that, you know, like, what are, what are those bigger, what as a, as the school committee, would we be looking to try to advocate for? So, yeah, I mean, this is, it's all part, and maybe that by going through that handbook will also, you know, generate ideas for us and stuff, too. So just keep those thoughts going.
We sort of did intend to go, so does anybody have any comments on the school committee before we move on? Anything else regarding goal-setting?
I think I just want to piggyback on something Erica mentioned and some of the audience. I think part of our communication is like with, you know, with the public and getting as much community input as possible. But being strategic as a committee about how do we really advocate with our representatives? I don't know if that's as a unit or as individual school committee members or what the best way to do that is. But it is part of, and I think the language we'll use was really nice, was we're in this together and we all have a piece of the communication bullhorn. And how do we, how do we sort of talk with our legislators at all different levels? And I do think we have a responsibility to try to be cohesive as a committee in doing that, to try to get our needs met. And then obviously, the community will rally too to do some of those things. But I just wanted to highlight that, given the discussion that we had today around funding, how important it is to get them on board.
And that's something that would be helpful.
I think that's a great point. Thank you.
Anything else that you want to say? All right, then we'll move on to reports. The chair has no report. Is there a collaborative report? All right, super tense report. Oh, wow. All right, so it's session tonight. So we're looking for a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn at 7:33 PM. So roll call vote. Mary?
Yes.
Mary, yes. Ken?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Thank you very much, everyone.